It's good to hear all this chatter out there, it really is. Because usually it's a morgue. No, I shouldn't say that. Welcome all of you to our City Council meeting tonight. I've asked, excuse me, Councilman Sigma if he'll offer the invocation, and Councilman Turk if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor.
Would everyone please rise? Please pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before I make a motion to approve the agenda, I'd like to, it's been asked if we make a change. We'll go with item on the 9B to be presented after our Youth City Council presentation, if that would be alright. Jason Smith has a conflict and he wanted to be here in case there was any questions about that final plat, so.
With that being said, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of 9B, item 9B being moved up after item 5A, and the rest going as outlined.
I have a motion and a second. Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, any announcements to make? You brought them?
I think your Dogtown Half Marathon seemed to have a great turnout. Maybe some others will report a little later on that, so. But thanks to those that participated and helped with that.
Thank you. Will we move on, any others? Sorry. Item 3, Declaration of Stanchions and Conflicts. Any to declare, gentlemen? Item 4, our consent agenda to approve the minutes of City Council meetings 21114 and 21214. Any questions on those minutes? Comments?
I'll motion to approve the minutes from 2114 to 21214.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second.
Turk, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Staley, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night. Thank you, gentlemen. Item 5, report from the U City Council on the recent trip to the Utah Legislative Session. Is that you, Mayor Cox, going to handle that?
Where I, Mr. Slidfield, first.
Okay. We need to have your mics needed for this.
And, there we go. I'm gonna go month by month, so you guys know what we're doing every month. In October, we had our Halloween History Tour, and our Trick Not Treat, I mean Treat Not Trick, I always mess that one up. We had over 500 trick-or-treaters there, so that was quite a bit of people coming through the house and seeing it. We decorated the Covington home, and it looked amazing, as you guys saw in the pictures. We kind of go all out every time we decorate. And November, we participated in the city's Veterans Parade. That was really amazing, as you guys all can attest to. We did all the signs for the Veterans Parade, so we hope those looked good and you guys enjoyed those. And December, November, we decorated for the Covington Mansion Christmas Tour. We helped by setting up, handing out donuts and hot chocolate. We were helping set up the wagons that you guys saw in the videos with the lights on them and the signs and things like that. We took those wagons and we were able to bring them to the Covington Mansion to meet Santa there, which is kind of cool for all the kids. I know they enjoyed it, and they were all excited on the wagons. And we actually had them carol on the wagon, so they were kind of singing Rudolph the Reindeer on there, so it was really cool for us. We had over 1,200 people come through the house, which is quite a bit, even more than last year. And so, we even had coverage on that through a couple local newspapers, so that was really cool. And the pictures were up, and they attended the event, and had great coverage of that. It was quite the magical evening with all the lights, and it was the nighttime, and just the weather was kind of perfect. We had school singing at the park and at the house in the back. And so, it was kind of awesome, because a lot of the elementary kids got to attend that, and even more people in the community were able to participate in it. And it was kind of a smell of Christmas. I mean, I know every year when I go through there, I'm so excited for Christmas, just because it kind of starts off the year, beginning of December, end of November, for the Christmas holiday season. It's usually the highlight of children's. I mean, every year I get questions about, oh, when's it gonna be? When's the date this year? And so, all the kids love it, and I know even people my age really look forward to it, especially me. Throughout the holidays, we gave Christmas tours of the mansion from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. every Monday night. We had our youth council members dress up as the Covingtons, and the rest dressed up in that age of era. And we had carols there. We had Reed Burr playing the piano, some old Christmas music, so it was kind of nice to have that. We had the old Schoolhouse piano there that was donated by the Lions Club, so we want to thank them for that. The Red Barn donated apples, so everybody that came through kind of got some really good apples. I know every time, I at least had to have two. They gave us a ton. It was awesome to be able to give apples to everybody that came through. And so, we want to thank George Staley for that. It was really awesome of him. For our caroling Christmas party, we took Christmas baskets to 10 people in our community. We do this every year. The people in our community that need a little bit more holiday cheer, there's some widows, there's senior citizens, there's those that have had recent sadness in their life. And every year, we love to do that. We just go up and walk through the door, sing a carol, give them a hug, you know, and just, and I, it really just brings a holiday spirit every year. And I know a lot of the community members enjoy that, and it really makes their holiday spirit great, and it's so awesome. In January, we went to the city's New Year Party you guys know about. That was quite the hit. It was awesome. I mean, every party you guys have is awesome every year, but the New Year's one was super awesome, and we want to thank you for holding that. We took down the Christmas decorations at the beginning of January and cleaned the Covington Mansion. We actually have a sign-up sheet now to clean that mansion on a regular basis, so we don't have problems in maintenance or anything like that. We want to handle that ourselves and make sure that's done. We also prepared the new Washington City Youth Council applications, and we're advertising those to the middle school and the high schools for the four high schools that we have in our region. The deadline for that is March 29th. We have 11 new openings this year, so not as much as last year. And so, it's gonna be, the competition last year was really tough. So even this year, it's gonna be even more tough than last year, so it's gonna be quite exciting. Anyone can download that application at our quick link, So, we want to thank you for that link, and how easy it is to access that, because people can now just go on there and download the application. In February, we decorated for Valentine's the month, and the Prisby Sisters gave tours of the Covington Mansion every Tuesday from 11:30 to 3:00 p.m. up until Valentine's Day, and they baked little heart-shaped cookies that were cute, and they were really awesome. I know they enjoyed that a ton, and so it kind of let other community members come into the house and kind of make it their own. And I know they enjoyed it, it was so awesome. And we had over 50 visitors just from that come through the house, and that's something we don't like super advertise, like our Christmas party. So those are private tours given throughout the house, so they get a real thorough history of the Covington Mansion. This was done through the approval of the City Council, so we want to thank you for that. And every other Wednesday, after our meetings that we have, we also give tours there, so there's even more opportunity for people in the community to come through and get a tour from us. We visited the legislation on Monday, the 10th. Everybody was super excited for that. We had a night at the Capitol, and the Speaker of the House, Becky Lockhart, was our tour through the Capitol. So she actually was able to get us through a lot of cool rooms that I actually have never seen before, and it was quite the experience. And Representative Ibsen was there, Senator Vickers, and Representative Standard was there. We really want to thank Representative Don Ibsen to set up the lunches that we had for us throughout the day, and it was just an opportunity that he set up for us, and we really do want to thank him for that. For the breakfast, the next morning, we had breakfast at the Capitol. We met with Senator Pat Jones and his interns. And then we attended a standing committee on law enforcement, where they passed out the commit bills on DEA talking, controls of prescription drugs, and shoplifting punishment. We actually had Jeremy in our Youth Council. Jeremy, will you raise your hand? He actually came up into the committee and talked about it, and it was quite, I mean, I know now our whole school is actually talking about it, which actually sounds kind of funny, but our government teacher in our health classes actually thought it was really cool, because they saw that somebody in our Youth Council was coming up and talking about it and giving insight, and it was actually a really good question. So, even afterwards, I know some members of the committee came up and talked to me about it, and we had kind of quite the discussion. So, it was really awesome for Jeremy to go up and ask some questions about that. And we also had our advisor, Sherri Reed, come up there and offer insight during the committee meeting. It was really, she gave a really personal touch to it, and so I know, talking afterwards with the committee members, that they also enjoyed that personal touch. So, after we attended the meeting, we went up to the House Gallery and watched them present their bills and the agenda, and how it worked, and the screens, and you know, everything like that. I think the newly-acquainted council members got to see how awesome that was to work that. And then we went over to the Senate House and had to see how they worked. We understood that's quite a bit of difference between the House and the Senate. And you learn that in history books, but now they can actually see that it's quite a big difference between those two houses. And in both houses, they actually, we were introduced to them through the Speaker of the House and the Speaker of the Senate. We met with Lieutenant Governor Spencer Cox after that. It was a little bit of excitement, because there was a protest in the front. It was kind of big, there were news cameras there and stuff like that. So what we actually had to do, we had to meet him in the back, and he came through the back way to meet us, just because we didn't want anything to happen or anything like that. So it was kind of exciting, and we really got a true experience of how it was up there, people were gonna protest, and people were gonna not agree with something that the legislation does. So, it was kind of cool to see that. So, the reason we--
Head coughed or anything like that.
I think they had a couple arrests.
No, you guys.
Oh, shh. No, of course not. So, the reason we met with Lieutenant Governor Spencer L. Cox was to offer him an award presented by the Washington City Youth Council. It was a volunteer in service award, because he is on the Commission on Youth Surf Utah, which is trying to get 47.7% of the Utahns to volunteer and surf. And I know he was kind of surprised at the award, and I know he loved it. He picked it up, and he was like, oh, this is really cool. And we got to take a picture with him. If you guys noticed the picture that we took with him. And he actually had a really good insight on our electoral officials. The line he said was, "When electoral officials forget who they are and only go by their titles, it's time for them to step down." So, a lot of us kind of just see our representatives and what they do, but he kind of gave us a little more insight on our officials and what they do, and what they really mean to us, and how we can go and talk to them, how they represent us, because I mean truly, they're there to serve us. And so, us being up there and him giving us this insight allowed us to see what it really meant for him to be a representative for us, and what we can do with our own representatives in Utah. And he went on a mission to speak Spanish, so what we had was Irene, can you raise your hand? Oh, she's not here right now, actually. Sorry, she had practice. And so Irene actually spoke in Spanish to him, and he thought it was a really cool touch, because he speaks Spanish. And so, he was a little slow on it, because it's been a while since his mission, but he thought it was really cool that we were able to talk to him and give him one of our work shirts that was created by the Youth Council. So it was kind of our own special touch to give to him, with the service award. Representative Senator Don Ibsen fed us burritos for lunch, and he also invited the fiscal analysis and other bill writers to come in and talk to us. And it was, I didn't have that experience last year, but it was amazing what has to go through for a bill to go through the entire House and the Senate and to become a bill. Even like history books don't tell you that, how much detailed information we had there. All the money that goes into it, all the firms that have to make to have a bill. And so, we want to thank him for that, because he brought them there, and they were kind of the undergo of the bill process. And so, it was very interesting to see how that happened. And so, that whole experience that we had there was a very educational and fun experience. We want to thank you guys for giving us that opportunity, really. And I know, the next day, I had to go straight to AP Government, and it was just a review. I mean, for the past three weeks, I mean, everybody that's here in AP Government can attest, like it really, what we learned in one day has been three weeks of review in AP Government. It's amazing how much we learned from that. And so, we really want to thank you for that opportunity. In fact, sometimes I know Bronson all the time is telling the teacher some detailed information that he might not have, so. It's quite funny, and the teacher actually really enjoys it. He actually thinks it's really cool that we did that. And the whole school kind of talked about it for that week, and we still, you know, have our insights about it. This last weekend, we helped with the Dogtown Run at Staley Farm. We helped park cars, watch children in the play area, and anything they needed help with, they kind of kept us busy, which we love doing. We set up the course for the Children's 1K. We used our dogs for encouragement and put little awesome signs up for them, so when they were running, they could read the signs. And in fact, one girl came up to me and asked me if I'd run with her. I was like, oh, okay. So I ran with her, and so it was kind of cool being able to encourage the little kids to finish the race, and they all finished, and they had fun with it. So it was cool. Our new upcoming events will be selecting the new council members. As I said, we have 11, so anyone that wants to join, they can go online at washingtoncity.org/yc. Love that link. And we're also helping the Lions Club with the Easter Egg Hunt, like we do every year. We're doing the Cotton Days, again, being over the children's area with kind of a new surprise we're gonna add this year that we hope the children would love. And from the help of Home Depot, we kind of have the-- you guys will get to see that, it'll be fun. We have our annual graduation, which we all hope you can attend. And we get a meet and greet with our new council members and teach them what they're gonna have for the upcoming. This is my last year, so. Our city manager, Roger Carter, he asked us to leave a legacy behind after we graduate, and we feel like we've actually left some great starting traditions here at the Covington Home. We feel that we have helped the citizens of Washington embrace the mansion and see the value in the city buying the home, where it's the oldest home in Washington County, still standing. The history of settling in Washington gives an appreciation of our forefathers and understanding the hardships that they endured and they settled over Washington, to settle over the city of Washington City. So we really want to thank our forefathers for that, and it gives us appreciation of why we're here and why we settled in this community. And I know, I mean, it's just kind of hard for a lot of the citizens to get that information from books, because they're not in our history books. So when they can come through the Covington Mansion, we can show them, you know, what it took to be in Washington City. Gives them some insight that you don't learn in school. They're gonna have to come out and do, either come to the Covington Mansion or read the whole entire book. So, that's kind of a cool insight that we can give to them. And once again, we just want to thank the City Council members for giving this opportunity and everything you guys do for us. I know we can attest and appreciate for all of you doing, so thank you so much for that. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have you all enjoyed it? Been a good experience? We're glad. You know, now that you're the Washington City Youth Council who are representing the second-best city in the state of Utah to live, did you know that? It's all over the internet. Yeah, we were voted the second-best place in Utah to live. Yeah, Washington City. So, put that feather in your hat. We thank, what day is your graduation?
May.
May, okay. Thank you all very much. We appreciate what you're doing. Carmen, thank you. Those tireless hours that you spent with these young folks.
Carmen and Sherri.
And Sherri, yes.
Can we, I'm gonna ask if we can be excused at this moment?
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the bump-up item of 9B, final plat. Consideration to approve a final plat for the Creekside Town Homes located at approximately 250 South, 350 West.
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope that, is Apple TV on, Denise? It'll pop up here, we'll get going. Thank you for allowing us to be bumped up and give, as I refer to him, Commissioner Smith, an opportunity to get to another meeting he has to for work. So, the applicant has requested approval of the final plat for the Creekside Town Home subdivision. The subdivision proposes 40 lots, and the area of coverage is 4.48 acres. The zoning at this particular site, as I think we all remember, is a PUD, Planned Unit Development. Now, the preliminary plat was approved back on July 17th of 2013. An application had been made, of course, and staffs reviewed that application and proposal, and finds that it conforms to that approved preliminary plat. Now, the Planning Commission reviewed the request at their February 19th meeting last week. Now, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat for Creekside Town Home subdivision to the City Council, based on findings and conditions in your report. Note, there's, we have now five standard ones in our final plats, but number six is a note that was added. A note to be added to the plat referencing the spring water collection line that has been installed, requiring the property owners and homeowners association to be responsible for the main-- in the main maintenance of that. So uh, that's one Public Works wanted to have on the plat, so one note will be added, so.
I don't think I got this in my packet, so.
I'm surprised this one isn't etched in your mind. We, we've seen it a lot for a while. It's like an old familiar friend that's-
It had pine trees last time I saw it.
That's true. That's true. And if you've been by, there are four, you know, units going up right now. Um, and they're at the top. Again, I can't point on, on my iPad, but it's those units one, one oh one through one oh four. Uh, they're coming in under the um model home ordinance that they took advantage of just so they could take advantage of the parade of homes like everybody did. If you noticed, we had a lot of activity in our city and around southern Utah last week with the parade of homes, so. Those have already been begun. Two of them are finished. Uh, the other two were kind of held until this got done. Um, but I did let them get to a certain point and uh, but those units are already standing.
The grade area to the, to the east, is that part of the, of that lot at the almost five acres, four point four eight acres, is that, is that grade area part of the lot?
Yeah, if you look at all those squiggly, the dash lines right to that right side or the east boundary of it, that's the, the property line.
So is that, uh, is that a trail? Is that part of our master plan trail?
It is. It is, and the creek runs through that area. Um, flood plain runs through that area, all of them. So that's that area that's kind of been designated as such.
When I, I drove by to inspect it again today and I looked, there's some, there's a gate and some signs on that, that where the trailhead would be along the creek. And it says no, no trespassing. City of St. George. Why St. George has no trespassing signs up there?
It's an access road to their-
To the, to the Sandberg property, which is a water, a water gathering. That's what it is. So it, it's an easement for them and that's their access to get in and out.
Okay, so that, that's more than just a trail easement, that's also an easement for them to-
For the canal, yeah.
Their, their inlet pipe to Sandburgs takes out Mill Creek right above there. So then it runs all along the road and they've gotta maintain it too.
Yeah, so we see them often. Every once in a while, you'll see them driving around down there and that's what they're going down and checking that and make sure it's maintained and clear and clean, so.
On the same portion of it to the southernly corner, what's that? That dark, darkened area there?
This one, it's just the detention area for part of their, is that still valid, Jason? I think, the detention pond? Is that the one you're, it's, it says detention area in it. I, I know it's hard to read, but does that, that's the one you're talking about?
That's the one I'm talking about, yeah.
Yes, well, maybe I'll have Jason address that.
Jason Smith, um, representing the applicant. Uh, thanks for moving this for me so I can get to my other um appointment. Uh, the detention area has been removed. It's gonna be underground in a pipe. Um, I've worked that out with Public Works. Um, the reason it's been removed is because of the access um for St. George. They've, they've gotta maintain vehicles. There's also a high pressure gas line there and we didn't want to have to deal with that. So what we've proposed and is that we put a, a twenty-four inch pipe um along the side there that will, will function as a detention area and then it'll, it'll be um-
Where will it discharge?
It'll discharge to Mill Creek, but at a reduced flow. So that is, that's the new plan and this was submitted before that was accepted, so that'll be changed on the, on the plat.
You toggle a little smaller again, Drew.
Is that too small?
That's probably too small. What's the dotted line that runs through unit one twenty?
Oh, um, it looks like it's a, it's just a block line from the old layout of, yes, that's what it is. Cause it continues all the way over and ties in is there, so it's just an old block line reference. Cause this used to be a right of way where that, you know, thinner area below that dotted line is and it's been abandoned.
You toggle a little smaller again. Bigger than you had it last time, there you go.
Just while you're thinking, if you notice that parking up on the top was the extra parking that the council wanted when we reviewed this and is, is put in on the plat. Right at the entrance as you come in for visitor parking.
In the center, are they, are they going to do any type of playground area or is it grass or what's in, in the middle? Jason, what are they doing there?
Um, they're, they're proposing a splash pad there is, is what they're, they're plumbing it for and there, it should be in the process of being put in there, so that's what I understand is gonna be there.
So is that on the drawings that they've submitted to the city then?
Well, in the PUD, they just called out a recreation area and we give them their choice. We just make sure that whatever they've choo- chosen will be in place.
What, I mean, there has to be something more than just grass then, or is grass a recreational area?
No, grass cannot be counted as record. Has to have at least either a place set or a splash pad or something, um, you know, volleyball or a basketball court, some, some kind of facility other than just, oh, there's your grass recreation area. We don't accept, accept that.
And it seems that they could catch the, the trail and head right up to uh the Nissen Park pretty easily from there too.
Well, the trail, if you go right by the, you know, you gotta go to the culvert.
They could, they've gotta cross the street.
Actually, they would have to cross the river or the creek to get to that side.
Yeah, they, yeah.
But it's just across the street, so it's not-
But, but part of their project wasn't, yeah, you know, for that. It's part of the PUD, they have to, you know, to some, do some of those amenity things that will, it's not part of the final plat, but it is on the, the other, so. And that may be deferred to a later time just because of certain-
Why aren't we requiring that they extend the trail? I know that, I know that we have a trail to the north side of the road and then the culvert and they own the, the creek bottom and all of that area. Seems like we usually have the landowners that are wanting to develop in the path of a trail.
Okay, that was part of your approval. It is part of their approval in the PUD that they'll, they'll do that.
Okay. Is that what that darker line is through the hatch area?
Is that what the-
Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
Yeah, that's the proposed trail. Um, and we're just, we just want to make sure there's connection there, so um, they might look at deferring it if there, if there's not a connection there.
Connection where?
A connection across-
So you have to just cross the creek, basically?
Yeah, we, yeah, basically, yeah, there's, there's a couple of, of different things that we, we want to make sure that. We don't want to create the trail to go to nowhere, for lack of a better term. Um, and so they, they've included in their, their estimates and everything. So the question is, is if the city wants it to go and, and just terminate there, um, they're willing to do that, but they didn't know if the city was wanting that or, or not.
You're talking on the south end?
Yes.
Does that tie into St. George's master plan for their trails or no?
No, it's our master plan.
All the way along the creek.
All the way down to, to Sullivan Park is where it's supposed to go.
Right, but, but isn't it St. George City right at the south end of this property?
No, not on this particular corner. It's beyond the next piece that Walmart owns.
There's another piece in between there.
It's an odd piece, but Walmart owns that, even though it's a great elevation between their store and everything, they, they have that piece for some reason down there. But this is part of the master trail that'll follow the creek and then tie over in at the, at the, uh, over by the soccer fields and Sullivan Park down there. This one is the one that adds all that, that direction down there.
So I, I mean, it needs to be clear that the city does want that, don't we?
We do. Generally, what we've done in the past, like um up in Mill Creek is we have them, there's an engineer's estimate, they give us a check, we put it into a fund and then we have it when it's time to build. This is what we do because that's really sometimes the best. Instead of building this thing that we have to go in and maintain, it starts, you know, somewhere and finished, but has no connectivity. So that's generally what we do as part of the development. We'll, we'll get that in the, the form of a check and put it in an account.
So I, let me see if I can understand this though. So, cause this trail's on the wet, on the west side of the creek. It connects to the trail north there's on the east side.
The culvert unfortunately has the step down in it on the east side.
And so, I'm sorry.
There's a bridge, it's included.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, it's part, it's on the drawings that there's a, when you look at the PUD, there's a, a crossover right there.
No, I agree with that.
Right, not, not up on the road level, but down by the creek. It'll just be a, a simple little pathway that-
If we anticipate that this trail is eventually gonna be built, why wouldn't we have at least that portion built now? Especially if these kids are in there trying to access that park.
Oh, yeah.
We would want that as part of-
Absolutely.
The build out of this-
There was a reason why the Public Works wanted to defer and I can't remember. Mike, do you remember? Is it something I think Lesser might have talked about? But we'll, we'll clarify that as it'll either be built or the money in there, you know, it has to be a, a good justifiable reason why we do the deferral at that point. So we'll, we'll make sure that, that's covered at that.
So, so to be clear then, this, this trail to the east of their buildings will tie into our trail by a, by a bridge to get to the east side of the creek and tie into the trail system that way. And on the south, it will be stubbed to, to connect down along-
Down to the next development that'll then be responsible for that.
But the act, what, what it would do is help these people who live there to get to the park without having to cross that road.
Across the street.
That's to get there. And if, if indeed that trail's gonna be a part of our, if we anticipate that trail's going in, I would say let's put it in now rather than-
So does that need to be part of the conditions on the recommendation, on the approval tonight? Or is that on-
No, cause it's gonna be, well, it, it's already conditioned on the PUD that it be put in. Um, so we're fine. I could say, I just can't remember what I was, there was a, a reason. I don't know if it's because of the Cap Canal Company, it's, or, or something, but we'll, we'll get that worked out and make sure that. And if we have an issue, we can always bring it back, back to you gentlemen, you know, for that. But I just vaguely can't remember what it was, but I knew that we'll either hold the money in account or have it built one way or the other, so, cause they are responsible.
Yeah, I'd prefer to have it built. I mean, if you're gonna have forty, you know, thirty-eight units with families, it'd be nice for them to be able to, the, the children to access right up to our park.
Absolutely.
And have an easy access there. So that would be my preference for the record.
One thing, Mike, and you, you probably, I don't know at what point you've had a look at this. I know that one of the concerns that was brought up in, in the preliminary plat was the drainage with a lot of the groundwater that's there. I'm assuming that's been looked at and addressed to make sure that we're not gonna have an issue somewhere down the road. Okay?
I think that goes to that special, it might be part of that note that we had put on, that they've addressed those spring water collection areas.
Yeah, well, if you recall, one of the, one of the presentations that was shown to us was that particular pipe that sits there now, that was not functioning, obviously, because it had a road all around it and water was running around the pipe, but not through the pipe.
Not through the pipe, so.
And so anyway, I would assume that, that that would have been handled through Public Works and the grading plan and those things. I just wanted to make sure that indeed had, cause I was a concern that some of the other landowners have brought in.
Right.
On, when this came through, either on the, on the PUD or on the preliminary plat, we had discussed extensively the traffic along two hundred south. Part of that discussion was no parking signs along the road there. And I think we even discussed a red curb. I'm not sure if either of those were conditions.
The curb wasn't, but signage was in front of their development.
So signage is already part of the conditions of, of-
Yes.
So at what point do those signs get put up?
Tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning?
Probably, you know, I would probably make it condition that before a C of O is getting, that we'd have them get those signs out there.
Well, just like, I know that, that some council members had concerns with, with the traffic and that was one of the mitigating reasons for some of us to, to vote in favor of this project.
Yeah, and so, you know, they are responsible, you know, from the east to the west on their side of the street to have those, but we, we don't go with red curbs much because there's maintenance and once they do it, then it, it's deeded to us and we are maintaining these red curbs and, and the signs, you know, if you put them on there, they're adequate enough for tickets to be issued if they're parked there, so.
I think our youth council will give them a red bucket of paint and keep them maintained for you.
Problem is you'd have, you'd have red sidewalks and red streets.
That wouldn't be too hard to be done. Now, as I recall-
Handprints on the signs.
Yeah, as I recall, too part of that motion was that there would be a wall across that front edge.
There will be, cause they have landscaping that'll be on there and it's all part, again, the PUD shows the landscaping and the wall, etc., so.
All right. We also had a lot of discussion about just the adequacy of two hundred south altogether, especially to the east. And we've got, we've got mailboxes at the edge of the asphalt a few places. Um, I still have a grave concern about the, the ability of that road to, to service the traffic that we're putting onto it. And I don't see that we've made any additions and I'm not saying it's the developer's obligation, but we haven't made any improvements either.
Sure, I think there was a discussion about calling in deferments down the street or etc., so I'm, I'm not sure that's at, at this point, so.
Any other questions, comments, Drew, or, or for Jason?
If not, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat for Creekside Town Homes located approximately two fifty south through fifty west with the, the, what's my word?
Findings and-
The findings, for the findings and conditions that are noted. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Nye's nigh.
Truman aye.
Staley aye.
Seg Miller nay.
Turek aye.
All right. Thank you, it passes. Four to one. Okay, we'll go back up to uh item six. Public hearings and related ordinances. Public hearing for consideration to prove, to approve an ordinance amending the city code Title IX zoning regulations, Chapter eleven, industrial slash business park I dash one, I dash two BP. Section two use regulations to permit automobile fueling stations with or without convenience stores. Applicant Southwest Auto Recycling, Jared Hardy.
Mayor, just let me get to that page so I can get the, the ordinance links on the screen. Thank you. Uh, the applicant is wishing to amend the city code, again, as the mayor stated, for allowing automobile fuel stations with or without convenience stores and/or automobile wash facilities, fully automated only, uh, in the industrial one and industrial two zoning districts. Currently, right now, if you look in the book, under that particular heading where these, the two Ps that appear there now for permitted, there's two N's that appear there now for not permitted. Um, had a applicant come in and was wondering why we wouldn't allow a fuel station or convenience store and, you know, I don't know, cause this code preceded me, uh, this amendment, so I really didn't have a good answer, cause I know I've been to other cities and even to our neighbor, uh, to the west. And if you go through some of their industrial parks, there's fuel stations, there's sandwich stores for people to work in the area, etc. So I didn't have a real good answer. So I said, well, it's something that you can apply and probably take for the, the city council and see if they'll consider uh the many of the odds to allow those. I'm sure they wouldn't mind the tax revenue and, and other things, but I really didn't have a, a real good reason why not to. I mean, if I dig real deep in my heart of hearts and mind to minds, I might find one or two, but um, other than that, we've presented it and they've gone through the application process uh for this. The Planning Commission held the public hearing as well and reviewed this on their February fifth meeting earlier this year. Um, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment to the Washington City Code, specifically the Title IX, eleven, uh, two dash D limited or listed uses is what it's under and specifically the automobile fuel stations is, as outlined in your report and on the screen. So um, with that, uh, that's what's before you tonight and uh I'll be glad to answer[1705.54] and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Right now, let's refresh my memory on what is allowed in a BP generally? What kind of-
That's business parks. So you're looking at more research and development-type places that, you know, I like to think business parks is really nice industrial areas, but they've got lots of landscaping. And, you know, someone like an IBM would be kind of in a business park. Is the best way to describe that. Or if you've been up north in Salt Lake, they have some great business parks that are more research development. They're not really commercial, but they fall into the kind of the manufacturing, but they're not heavy manufacturing in any way. So you can put some technical colleges go in business parks. Now, they're generally an overall development of series of a lot of like businesses that are in that, and-
And they're all still in the quote "industrial" zone over there?
They kind of fall within that, because they do fall out of the commercial, because they're really not retailing anything. And so they're kind of one of those animals that where do you put them? And they're really at the lightest, lightest of industrial, because there is sometimes light manufacturing that goes on, say for a high-tech, you know, when they make computer wafers, etc. They're not really heavy industrial, but they fit in this very light industrial kind of setting.
I'm just trying to think. So I assume we don't have business park designations in neighborhood zoning?
No.
Okay.
They're fitting more, and they have to be- They fall under an industrial in the general plan, so they have to be in that category of industrial to even get a zone change to go business park, because we do consider them somewhat industrial.
Also include in that just light manufacturing, fabrication of goods go in a business park.
So a hostess company could maybe come in if they were really, you know, love to have the ding-dongs being made or the twinkies here.
I think kind of like a Reed Ashman and something that you down below Costco, you see some of those small manufacturing facilities. That's kind of what I would picture.
It's almost like a contractor. They can fit in the contractor's yard, certain ones of them. And but they're more of an upscale kind of development than just your standard industrial-type things. Usually someone will come in and build a park, and that's why they call it the business park, because it's almost like a subdivision for them. They really make it nice planter areas, and they- It's just a- I think we've all seen them or been through some of them, and that's just what a business park kind of is, is.
We see that a lot in your computer software developers, their bigger companies.
Yeah, if you've been to the Bay Area around and all those, like I say, the Hewlett-Packards and all them, they're all in these big business parks, and they're really nice, nice places. But we still left that a condition use permit, because we wanted to- I don't want a kind of a, you know, not really nice-looking fuel station to come in in a nicer business park. We'd probably want them, we'd want to see their elevations to make sure it's in accordance with what's around them, is why the condition use permit would be in those, just because some business parks are really nice. And if one did come here, we want to make sure that the elevations of a fuel station would be a little bit cohesive with the surrounding area. So that's why we wanted to keep it as a condition use permit in the BP.
Well, I certainly would think it'd be a positive thing. I look at the industrial park out where the mayor likes to call his home away from home other than the city office building. And they have two or three fueling stations out there with little goodies, you know. Some of them has a little fast food restaurant in it. And I know on several occasions when I've got to call on customers out there, that's why they want to go to lunch, is like, "Let's just run down here to the gas station."
The A W or the Blimpy, right?
Yeah, exactly. So they certainly fit a good purpose for those areas that have industrial going on in them. To me, they add a positive influence to that.
And they're usually not open after 5:00 or 6:00?
Exactly, yeah. They usually close when the businesses are closing there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because their clientele all of a sudden drops way off, so. Because there is someone who wants to be putting one in here in the near future. That's why, of course, this is coming out, just because- So it'll be out on Washington Dam Road is kind of, you know, the area.
It's going to be right at Southwest Auto along the main dam road, is that what it will be?
Right, yeah, when it comes, so. Yeah.
That may be, you know, it certainly helps the residents, and it's convenient to the residents. To me, it's a positive influence there.
And I do too, and I see it as, you know, a tax revenue generator, etc. And again, I think it'll benefit. Because anybody that wants to get something, they probably have to bring their lunch or drive all the way in. If they did put a C-store in or something, they'd probably do quite well lunchtime, so.
Also got to do is throw out the Red Box there in there.
Exactly.
That's a draw, isn't it? That is, that's the busiest place in any convenience store, is that box out there. There we go. This will cut that down.
And when you figure out your gas cost, it's cheaper to buy it online than run to Red Box.
Are we in a public hearing then?
Yeah, we probably-
This is a public hearing, so. Is anybody out there that would be interested to make a comment on this? Jason, come on up.
Jason Vellas, resident of Washington City. I know the general area, and I think it'd be a good little service out there, so support it.
Thank you.
A motion to close the public hearing, second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Nice and high.
Truman eye.
Staley eye.
Seg Miller, eye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item B, consideration to approve an ordinance amending the city code 911-2 to allow automobile fueling stations.
Mayor, if there's no more discussion, I'll make the motion to approve an ordinance to amend Washington City Code 9-11-2 to allow automobile fueling stations within the designated zones as discussed this evening.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second.
Turek eye.
Seg Miller, eye.
Staley eye.
Truman eye.
Nice and high.
Thank you, gentlemen, again. Seven, preliminary plat, consideration to approve a preliminary plat for the Presidio subdivision located southwest corner of Washington Dam Road and Arabian Way, approximately 1100 East, Washington Dam Road. Applicant Stacy Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, request for the Presidio. This particular subdivision is proposing nine lots, and the area of coverage is 2.86 acres. The zoning at this particular area is the single-family residential 10,000 square foot or the R110. This is actually just for a little history. A lot of you have seen this probably. If you live out in that area, seen it already built for quite a while, and it was built. They actually even applied for a final plat but never recorded, and then it expired, and then everything kind of expired because the economy was expiring, it almost felt like at that time. So they have brought this back. Mr. Hughes and Mitchell are the owners on this and wanting to resurrect this project. And not much to do, because a lot of it was built, and construction drawings were all taken care of back then. And so we're back going through the preliminary plat process. This is the first step for them to move forward. Hopefully, it might be a quick turnaround for them, because there won't be a lot in-between time because of what's already in place. So with that, just to make a little bit of a note, there's a 30-foot-wide landscaped area that's been out there. It's kind of a detention area. It's been cleaned up recently, which is good, because it was neglected for a little while. It looks really a lot better, and I, you know, appreciate that out on Washington Dam Road. So with that, the request, of course, meets the zoning regulations as it did originally. At this particular location, staff reviewed the request again, and it's the same original plat. We really haven't had any changes since then, at least on our end for that. So the staff was in approval with this, and the planning commission held a public hearing on it on February 5. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat for the Presidio, a name that I really like, by the way, anyway, with the conditions to the city council on this. And it's our standard. I'm trying to think there, I think there was a few- A number 11 condition is an extra one than our standard. The stem portions of the flag lots, which are lots number four and seven that come off that cul-de-sac, shall be a minimum of 26 foot. And I'm pretty sure that they are, just to make sure that's referenced. And the post-construction maintenance agreement needs to, just to let them be prepared to have that ready when final plat comes forward. So those are the extra two conditions on this particular item. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Quick question. On the east side of Arabian, the OK Corrals, will we ever have sidewalk there? Or why don't we have sidewalk there?
You will, as soon as somebody comes back and redevelops on that side, they'll be required to do the improvements, because we changed the zoning, if you remember. The OK Corrals came to us via Old County, and it's been what it is. Some of you who've lived here forever, it's been what it's been for probably most of your lives.
Since it's been what it's been.
Yeah, since it's been what it's been. It created that way. It was made for horse, you know, people that have some horse areas there, and a lot of them have kept that. But there are a few businesses in there that are working this way, but as soon as development happens, so. Because it is zoned industrial now, so.
I don't know. I mean, it may never develop out, but the long-term plan, that's probably one of the few stretches in the Washington Fields where we don't have curb and gutter, but especially on the Arabian Way side. What, short of as soon as, which I think would be a long time, what are the options to have sidewalk and curb and gutter there?
SID like that, though?
SID would be the way to do it. You'd have to get the property owners in on that and go forward that direction. That's probably about our only option, unless we want to put it in, and that's, I don't think that's an option. It is. It's not to go do the SID, so.
Well, you've got a school down the street and a lot of kids, although it's bust across Washington Dam Road, a lot of kids still walk and ride bikes across there. And then it can get overgrown with weeds and stuff, too, and Arabian's starting to be a more and more, you know, busy road.
Yep. That's kind of our options, unfortunately, at this point, and-
Either we pay for it or SID it.
That's what I would probably estimate.
Yeah, because we've also got dirt roads just right there. Like Thoroughbred Way becomes dirt pretty quickly.
And also-
And those get off, a little bit off the beaten path, so those are-
Yeah. And the other concern I might have on that, without going in and knowing where property lines are, there might be acquisition of property that'd be needed as well as putting it in.
Well, and the truth is, you know, there are corrals or shops and it does- And it's great for the use that it is, but thinking in terms of Arabian Way being quite a major road and a big access for the school down there, I think at some point curb and gutter and sidewalk would be nice. I know it's not an easy fix, but.
Got a few questions about the plat here, Drew.
Okay.
Lot seven and lot four, are those just flag lots that access off of that little circle?
They are, yes.
Okay. Then lot three, two, and nine, do they access off of Arabian?
Number three is off of Arabian, two is off of Arabian. I think one might probably have its option. They just have to make sure there's so many feet off of the back of the curb. Eight, nine would be off of Arabian. Well, eight could have the choice, too, if it meets the minimum. So it would have maybe a two alternative.
I echo Councilman Staley's concerns about Arabian. If we could have eight and one not access off of Arabian, I think it'd help improve our traffic along there.
I guess, Mike, you okay with it? You wouldn't find any problem with that, right? Because do you think they still have enough on, off of Thoroughbred Court to? I know I'm putting you kind of on the spot, but it's more your forte.
Yeah, they would have to actually enter right at that, what would be their west property line, kind of on that knuckle of the cul-de-sac, on one or eight, just to have the setbacks from the curb there. And the same thing if they were on Arabian, they'd have to be back on their, almost to their corners of the lot.
When you say the back corners of the lot or the front corner of the house, the setback off the house.
Could you point on the map where the access points would be for the lots then? So we can- Aren't there some more lots though? And then there's one more lot on Arabian to the north.
Yeah, there's eight and nine who don't have any access.
It's actually two, you know, you have lot- Two and three are both going to have to come off. There's not a-
So lot three, there's enough.
Just thinking, if we're at the preliminary phase, can we, do I have the ability to say, "Yeah, I'll approve it" if lots one and eight don't access off Arabian?
I imagine council could make that decision. I mean, it meets our access management guidelines by accessing off of Arabian. It's still a residential road. It's not a high-traffic road, per se, even with the school using it quite often as a route. And there's many, many other houses up there that access off of it.
Yeah, Arabian is a residential.
Are you thinking of Real, not Commune Royale?
No.
But it will. It will connect, maybe not all the way south, but pretty far south. I mean, it parallels Commune Royale, and the school's not a- The school's on Arabian, so it does get a lot of traffic, but it's definitely residential.
It's, yeah, it's classified as a 50-foot residential road where Commune Royale's a residential collector, which I believe is a 66, 60.
On lots five and one, those multiple lines there, Drew? So how do you understand what that is? You see the kind of at the-
Oh, right up in all those? That's elevation. That's stepping down. And if you've been, well, right now, if you go there, there's boulders. So again, this is going back to the original. They've already put in the, that's a retaining boulder wall. So really, but that just tells you there's an elevation change.
As I drove it, that, yeah, I can see that.
If you, you know, between lot one and two, there's a boulder wall, and then between four and five, same. And then, yeah, that's what those are, is elevation changes.
There's no more discussion. I will move that we approve a preliminary plat for the Presidio subdivision located at the southwest corner of Washington Dam Road and Arabian Way at approximately 1100 East.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second.
Nice and high.
Truman eye.
Staley eye.
Seg Miller, eye.
Turek eye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now, that wasn't with any restriction then, right? They didn't want to have that?
No, no restrictions.
Okay, move on to item eight. Consideration to approve the name change of the subdivision, New Warm Springs Phase 6 to Perry Landing subdivision, located approximately 950 North to 1160 North from 400 East to 600 East. Applicant Greg San, Perry Development.
Thank you, Mayor. This is pretty simple. New Warm Springs number six got recorded by a particular developer a while back. Perry Homes purchased the entire project. I'm not speaking out, right, Greg? Purchased the entire Phase 6. And with that, just wanted to come back so they can brand the subdivision with their name versus the other name that was, they're the current name. And that's what they're just coming in asking, that that name be changed from New Warm Springs Phase 6 to Perry Landing subdivision. Everything else is identical. All the, I mean, they really didn't come and change anything but that particular area right there. And so, go ahead.
The first five phases are still New Warm Springs. Are there CCNRs or any sort of other community?
Well, I think originally, they might have gone in and annexed them, but I'll have Greg come up and address that, because I know they've come in, and they can go back and, on any subdivision, they stand on their own, they can annex in, but they can also go in and amend those. And I'll, we'll bring Greg up and see where they're at on their amending of those CCNRs and what they've done. Because I won't answer that all day, unless there's any other. You want to have him come up now?
Yeah. Curious to know. It seems like if there's five phases, there's got to be some form of community obligation or covenant that was in place.
The least of confusing.
Yeah.
My name is Greg San. I'm the Southern Utah Division Manager for Perry Homes. Glad to be here. To answer your question, phases one through three were all done by the same developer. Phases four and five were then done by a different developer. They chose not to join. Phases one through three, they did their own CCNRs and did not participate in any of the-
Association.
Association or anything. There really is no association. Well, I can't say that, I don't know. We decided when we bought Phase 6 to do different CCNRs altogether from Phases four and five. And so there, again, the only difference that's happening on those is just the name change.
And there is a little help with that. None of these houses are really tied on Phase Five, other than just by, I'll try to bring that up. Just to give you an idea that when you make the, the corners and turn in, it's all the back property lines from Phase Five that then join, uh, down six. So it's, you know, because sometimes if you split a street, sometimes it gets a little iffy on things, but they really don't face each other, these subdivisions. Uh, once you make those corner changes and the first homes you come in past the corners, um, are a different subdivision.
So basically painted cloud place becomes the division.
Right.
Back, back lot lines, which makes it nicer and clean.
Any other discussion on that?
On this detention basin, Drew, if there's, if there's CCNRs but no, no HOA, who's under the, who has the obligation of maintaining?
I think he made note that the previous ones don't have an HOA, but you folks will.
Yeah, I'm just saying that. Oh, you will have an HOA?
Yeah, that's correct. The previous ones don't have an HOA, but we do.
Okay.
And we'll actually charge a minimal amount per year per home so that we can maintain. We've got the landscape strip, um, along Desert Tortoise, or Desert Tortoise, Tortoise, Tortoise Rock Road, as well as the detention basin. So, yeah, we, we realize we're responsible to maintain that. That's part of the CCNRs and part of the HOA.
That'll probably be one of the core functions of the HOA next to just enforcement of standards, I guess.
That is correct.
Drew, who named that Tortoise Rock Drive? Was that you?
I'm not touching that with a ten-foot. Uh, their name appears right above that 66-foot public right away, and I won't, that's who named it. So if you wanna know, can you see that on your screens?
I can. I'd be worried to have people thinking tortoises were rocks.
I didn't name it, but there's your answer. Who, who named it? Gotta have a little fun with them. They're good friends. Yeah, because the, the majority of the road is theirs. They, you know, they had to go through. In fact, that's what held this project up before many of your time on the council. Previous one was, and maybe Councilman Turk remembered this, it took a while to get the, the folks up in Salt Lake City to get all that done, uh, held this project up in the beginning, way back when they wanted to even build during the busy time. But then it just took so long and everything kinda fell apart. And, and so that, that road was mostly on settler property, but it's been a master-planned road and part of their, you know, plans up there too. So it'll be, that's why it's a 66-foot road. It'll be used quite a bit for the commercial on that side. And then heading north and south off of Buena Vista through the main part of their development.
Mayor, if there's no, no further discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve changing the name of the subdivision located at approximately 950 north to 1160 north, and from 400 east to 600 east, and formerly known as New Warm Springs Phase Six, to have the new name of Perry Landing subdivision.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second?
Turri, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Staley, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Greg, for coming.
Thank you.
Nine A, final plat. Consideration to approve the final plat for the Countryway Estates, Phase One, located approximately 1,000 south, 2,400 east. Advocate Gary Springham, Troy Wall, Wall Family Rails LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, a final plat, the particular phase for this Countryway Estates Phase One is proposing six lots on an area covering 8.90 acres. Uh, the zoning at this particular, uh, location is the residential agricultural one acre minimums, or RA1, um, in this particular area. Uh, the preliminary plat for the project was approved back on November the 14th of 2012. The staff has reviewed the, uh, application and request proposal for the Phase One final plat, and it conforms to the approved preliminary plat. Um, the planning commission reviewed the request at their February 19th meeting last week. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat for Countryway Estates Phase One subdivision to the city council based on the findings and subject to the conditions. And there are again the standard, except for number six. Um, public courts was concerned that we wanna place a note on the plat that there is the easement for the overhead power lines to be shown, uh, with, with any, with the restrictions that are applied to that. It's not our power line, but it's, I think Dixie's, uh, REA's power line, but we just wanna make sure it's on the plat that they know what those restrictions are. If you're wondering where it is, it's that line that kinda just bends right through the middle of the properties, uh, is the power line. Uh, so just, so that information was put on the plat for anybody that buys this, that they, even though they know those power lines are there, but just to be associated that there are probably restrictions and distances as all power lines carry with them. So that's the extra note on this particular plat. So with that, um, also, you may be wondering, there are houses. Phase Two's already halfway completed. Um, but again, phasing and names on them are just the names. So we, number one wasn't ready to go at the time when they, they wanted, so two was ready, and they kinda jumped to two, and now are coming back to one. And Phase Three will come at a later time, which should be the final one, so.
Any questions on this?
No, if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we.
I'm sorry, I got one question. The note, the, the individual stormwater retention note there, Drew, I haven't, either I haven't noticed it before, right near the north arrow.
Was it on the plat?
Yeah, it's right there. To the left of the north arrow, right there. Help me understand the reason of that, what we're, what we're trying to accomplish there.
I'm gonna let, Mike will probably have that. It's, it's pretty simple, but I'm gonna let him speak in his public courts terms.
That was actually a part of the development. They wanted to do their retention of stormwater on each of the lots. So we wanted to make sure that we have that on the plat, so everybody coming in knows that they will be retaining their stormwater.
This is in lieu of a, a detention basin or something?
Correct. And they're very large lots, so they have plenty of room to do it, but that's why.
And we believe that that will actually happen?
Yes. We, we're actually, when they, when they build the homes, we are actually checking because the such large lots, part of our MS4 permit or stormwatering permit, they actually have to do, um, the permitting through the state on each lot on those because they're so large. So as part of that, we have to go do the stormwater inspections on those lots.
And do you, do you require anything from engineering showing that there won't be the runoff?
Yes, we actually require them to give us an engineering certificate that they're building adequate to take care of their drainage.
That's the only question I have. Any other questions? Not, I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat for the Countryway Estates, Phase One, located approximately 100, 1,000 south, 2,400 east.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turri, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 10, agreement. Consideration to approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Washington City Fire Department and Mojave Community College to accommodate EMS training for the Washington City firefighters. Chief Haven?
Thank you, Mayor and Council for your time. This, uh, intergov, intergovernmental agreement is, uh, like the mayor stated, between Mojave Community College and the fire department. What it does is it allows our people to go to, uh, their paramedic course. They've, they've gone through one course and started a second course. Um, it allows us to go through that course at a reduced cost, um, almost saving close to $10,000 per person going through it. So they're giving us basically a non-resident, they're giving us a resident rate, basically, instead of the non-resident rate.
Based out of, out of, uh?
They're out of Arizona.
Out of Arizona.
Uh-huh. The class is being held in Hurricane at their fire station. Um, it's, uh, each, each term, we have to sign a new one of these, okay? So we would hope that that would happen. The department would be, our responsibility would be that if, if needed, we could provide classrooms, which we could do at the fire station, which Hurricane has been doing. We can also help provide instructors, which we have paramedics that could go over and, um, help with their testing and help with their skills and that sort of thing. To this point in the, in the, in the first class, and they're in the first semester of the second class, that has not been needed. They've had enough funding from students coming in, and they've been able to pay all their instructors and everything's taken care of. So really, at this point, we really have no responsibility. It's just a matter of our people. If they wanna go to school, they can go at a reduced rate. The, the department and the city would not be involved in the payment. Um, each individual would pay with a cashier's check directly through to the, to the community college so that we don't get involved in that. And if somebody doesn't come up with a payment, because we're not sponsoring these, um, to go ask paramedics. However, if the city ever did get involved in a paramedic program, and we had to have our people go to paramedic school, it would save us as a fire department a ton of money too. Because then we could, we could get them to do that.
When it says the department shall remit for each student or recue to recruit a sum equal to the number of credit hours approved for the course multiplied by the current.
Okay, so what they've allowed us to do is they will allow us to collect the money and cut a cashier's check to them without actually going through it. It'd just be, we would collect the money from the two or three guys that are going through that. We would give them a cashier's check out of that money, and it would never go through the city or the departments or anything of that nature. Hurricane has done that differently. They've, they've invoiced Hurricane, and Hurricane did have one guy that dropped out and didn't pay him, and so the city got stuck with it. And it was kind of a, not a good situation. So that's why they've changed that a little bit. What they've allowed us to do up to this point, and I should tell you, this is the first, the first year that we went through, Hurricane allowed some of our guys to just sign up on their roster. We only had one person that went through it. So we've been writing Hurricane's coattails. Hurricane has signed this agreement. Allez has signed the agreement. And so Hurricane allowed one of our guys, the first class, to sign up on their roster, get that reduced rate, and then work a couple of shifts at Hurricane to make it so that they were on that department legit. Um, we didn't get this signed in time for the first semester of this year, and so Hurricane, we have four people in the class this year, and Hurricane's allowed us to do that again. We just feel like, I mean, we can continue to do that, but we feel like we'd rather, rather than write somebody's shirt tails, we'd rather get it approved. And one of the things I think this does for us too is it'll, it, it gives us a recruiting tool. Um, anybody that wants to take that as a profession, and they're, they want to get their fire one, their fire two, their paramedic, all of that stuff, so they are more prepared to go into that profession. Uh, you know, it's, it saves them money. They can come to Washington Fire and they can get a, uh, their fire one, fire two through our academy. We can help save them money to go through their paramedic course through Mojave Community College. The other, the other option they have for paramedic is going to Dixie College, which again is about 12,000, and this is, would cost them about 5,000 to 6,000 going through Mojave with this agreement changed. So, the non-resident, non-resident rate at Mojave is about 15,000.
And anything we can do to help save them money and let them progress with their education and work together, I think it's good.
Yep.
Appreciate your efforts.
That's what we're looking at this as.
So what we'll probably be asking is that, uh, that you give, that you give approval to enter into the agreement. It's gotta have to be adjusted some way, because it's gonna be the city, not our department. We don't really have a fire district, just some basic stuff that'll change, including kind of spelling out what this is doing, because you read the agreement and you have really no clue what it necessarily, but, uh, Grant, the community college does a lot of these, these programs with our high schools out there, with a lot of intergovernmental groups. So it is, it's a great, uh, it is a great program. But right now, I guess we just want approval for the city to be able to enter in, into that on behalf of the fire department. Because the fire department doesn't really sign it. Where the city signs it.
I also wanna just give kudos to Mr. Starkey and Mr. Ekstrom. This is the first three-page intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement I've ever seen.
Usually once, it's intergovernmental, it's.
You heard Starkey working on that. Well, we got it.
We're gonna use their, their.
Get to the forties and 30s real fast once it becomes intergovernmental.
Yeah. It's, it's their form. That's a form that Grand Canyon likes to use. It's based on their laws. And the extent that our guys get, get breaks in that. So I was gonna ask, what are they, what's the alternative for our guys to get training? And it's locally. It's just so they pay three times as much.
Right.
So, we appreciate, we certainly appreciate that.
Sure. No, I think it's a great, a great opportunity for our guys, and, and anything we can do to encourage that certainly makes our, our, our department much better because of the training they're getting. And, and so it's a win-win for all of us. And to me, it's a great, great thing. So whoever's pursued that, I certainly appreciate that. I think it is great.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, not necessarily the one presented tonight, but a form of the one presented tonight between Washington City Fire Department and Mojave Community College, which will accommodate EMS training for Washington City firefighters.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turri, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, we'll go to item B. Consideration to approve an amendment to the cost-sharing agreement for storm drainage for steeplechase at the Washington Field subdivision by amending the payment due date. Public Works Director Mike Shaw.
We hit on this a little bit last night in work session, but, uh, the steeplechase development, uh, council approved the agreement back in November on this cost-sharing agreement. They've run into some financial problems. They're trying to transfer or sell the development. And he's requested that we change the, uh, date from January 31st, which we've already passed, to May 31st.
Not surprised he's requesting that. Where, where does May 31st come from? That's not very far away either. I mean, what?
That's the date that, uh, the developer had given me. He says, he believes that he'll have it prior to that, but that would be the final date.
We're waiting around to do the project until we get paid.
We are waiting till we receive the money to get into the project.
And if we don't get paid, there's really no arm-twisting that we had to do.
No, there's not, but it pretty much makes his development very expensive to build because now he has to do full-on retention in their development. So they, they see the benefit of it. He just would like to, uh, sell the development. He lives in California. It was an investment for him. Uh, I've actually been contacted by several interested parties asking questions on this.
Yeah, so he bought, yeah. As soon as he got his approval, he had this development up for sale.
Correct.
And he hasn't got a buyer. He's probably wanting to get it closed, and then he's thought, somebody else has money to pay them.
Now, if we don't get this money, we will actually proceed with what our original plan was to bring a storm drain line of 3650, a large storm drain line. Um, with this project, it actually helps us, uh, take care of a problem we have in Treasure Valley Development, as well as get the storm drainage to the school property. Um, we've also got an agreement that we're waiting on with the school district on their property. They're willing to contribute some money towards the project as well. So it's a great project for the three parties involved. It, it helps everybody out.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think, is there something we can learn from this? You know, oftentimes the developers come in, we get the promises, it doesn't turn out financially like they expect. We're left with less than what was represented. I know some things we get bonds for. Is this something we could have required a bond in place?
We, we still can, because they don't have, uh, um, a final plat on their, they got, I believe, final plat on Phase One, which their Phase One, they have to do retention with that Phase One. And any additional phases that will come in, they don't have the final plat on those. So they either do their full-on retention, or they contribute into the project, which is, uh, more cost-effective for them to contribute to the project than retain all their storm water. And we'll still be able to, to take care of our issues with Treasure Valley, as well as the school district's property, if we come up 3650 with a larger line.
We could charge them interest. A hundred and eighty thousand over three or four months.
Yeah, I think come March, probably see another request to move it out.
To May 31st.
Okay, May 31st.
But you're saying that you, you think that they'll come through on it if, if, it sounds like if, if the property sells, they'll be able to come through on it, and that would be beneficial to us to have that line go in that direction?
It will.
So.
It'll be beneficial to us, it'll be beneficial to the school district, beneficial to this property.
I don't love it, but I would see the position we're in, it would support it because of that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a.
State your name. Yeah, I'm Justin Shock. I represent the buyer, um, Robert Smith, who's buying it from the owner right now, Bob Moore. It's set to close on Friday, um, Friday morning before 10:00. If this gets approved, he's gonna go ahead with the closing on it, and he'll probably start developing it within a few weeks. He wants to start trying to get everything moved. So it would get paid earlier, but he wasn't gonna do it unless if he had the extension to, or for that period. But, um, his interest is to get it developed and built out as fast as he can. So I just wanted to let you know, there is a buyer there. He's willing and able to step up and pay for that, and it will get done in a timely manner.
Thank you.
I know that helps.
You're with him, all right. Okay. All right, thank you. You better wanna make a motion on that.
I'll stab. I'll, I'll move that we approve an amendment to the caution agreement for storm drainage for steeplechase at Washington Field subdivision by amending the due date to May 31st of 14, as presented in our packet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Turri, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Staley, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nice night.
Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to a report. Any reports to offer this body?
This report, Mayor, that it wasn't a, a committee assignment, nor of a personal interest, but I had the wonderful opportunity to run the 9K and just loved every second of the event, and the crowd and the location. It was, uh, were people everywhere, there were cars everywhere, there were runners everywhere, just a good, healthy, fun, energetic vibe. And so I was really, really glad to be there just as a participant, but also soak in the excitement and the fun of the event. I think we've got a good thing going.
Thank you.
I would just add too, Mayor, it was nice to see you today at the, at the ribbon cutting at Brigham's Playhouse. It looks like it's gonna be a great addition to, to Washington.
I recommend, uh, Roger, that we have maybe a Washington City night where they work through Wendy and offer some discount tickets to those in the city that would like to go see that. They're having Little Women now, they're gonna do Annie. They're having Little Women now, they're gonna do Annie.
In six weeks.
In six weeks and then they're gonna do Sound of Music and...
The talent level is just amazing. They showed us a few little clips of Little Women and they have some really, really talented people on stage and the setting, I mean, it's really a nice setting, so if you have a chance, I mean, that's a great, a great thing to support.
And Council, you may share a little bit about where that's at. Our public may not know exactly where you're talking about, so you may give them a little more information.
It's in Cotton Town Village and it's actually a 20-year, almost 20-year college professor who's come down and wanted to open a local theater and almost felt like this was a mission of his to do it here in our community. So it's gonna be really neat, if you haven't had a chance to go see it, it's next to the Red Barn in Cotton Town.
Thank you. I echo that, that was outstanding. Any other reports? City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just update the council on a few projects we have going on that might be of interest. I can't remember if I talked about the issue that was going on with Telegraph Street as you go up over the hill and why we've worn our brand-new asphalt up.
I've got the same, I've got the same issue in front of my house, apparently, when I saw the cracks hill in front of it today. We might need to get that on the budget opening as well.
We had two issues go on, on Telegraph. We had where we repaired it from the settling issue. It had stretched the water pipe to the point that it came unseamed. That was after the new asphalt went in. So it was kind of a tragic day to watch it pull up some very good asphalt. And then we patched it.
Was the water pipe leaking?
The water pipe was, it was pulled apart.
That was the big water leak then?
Yeah, well, that was the first one. Then we repaired it and then just above it, I believe, a few days later, it ruptured. It ruptured, it'd been sitting on that, it's a rock, which is very typical, if it sits on a piece of rock, it'll take time. And so we had two breaks there within a matter of two weeks, week and a half. So I believe they're all repaired, but not, we got it paved. Okay, so great, so we just got that all done.
How many times have we put pavement on there, the last one?
Well, we put just, just once, because, well, no, twice, because we put the one down and then it broke again. So this'll be the third time, yep, this'll be the third time. Oh, you, okay.
So we got lucky and didn't pave yet?
Yeah, so I was wondering if Mike wanted to leave it unpaved now for a while, just to see if we get lucky enough.
I would say my past.
Is the pipe stress associated with the settling or, so part of the stress was caused by the settling area?
Yeah, what we feel is that the pipe was put in in 1995, so it hasn't been sitting on a rock since 95, but the movement in that hill, that was an expansion of clay underneath. So what we feel is with that expansion, it's lifted the water line, but it also lifted the lava rock up against the water line. And it's actually two separate places and it split a 20-foot length of the PVC pipe. So we were lucky, we fixed the first pipe on a Friday and the following Tuesday, the second pipe broke and we, actually, they were supposed to be in on Tuesday to pave that, so we kind of got lucky, we didn't get the pavement down. But yes, it actually had been paved three times because we paved it, their asphalt didn't meet spec and we made them take all the asphalt out and repave it on the original paving.
Water draining on the south side of the road, is that where it ended up?
Yes. Into our, and part of our project to repair that road was to repair that borrow ditch there and gravel it and actually line it with a membrane so water wouldn't get into it and it washed a lot of that away because a 12-inch line could dump a lot of water real fast. We washed it out and we still have to repair that gravel area.
The only other public works item I'd probably mention is the sewer maintenance building is completed now. There's still some sprinkling system and asphalt needs to be done. This, of course, is out of the public works yard, so that's kind of completed there. With regards to leisure services, the paperwork is in hand for the trail, it's all completed. We've received the green light, public comment period is over with, and so we received that yesterday. So again, as you remember, we'd already bid that out and they'll actually be mobilizing right around the 3rd of March and should be done with the project. There is some question on whether the asphalt will be able to be installed before April and I don't know the answer to that, I've got Barry following through on that. I don't know why it couldn't, but we're pursuing, that was the only question that came up. But we should be completed by the time we need to be completed with regards to the environmental issues, which we have one on April 1st, one April 15th, so the April 1st one is the one that kind of governs that particular issue. But the good news is that trail is underway, will be underway. Cemetery, I know we've had some discussion on that, ready to bid that out, anticipating beginning construction sometime around the 1st of April, respected that with a 60-day build period. It might probably be a little sooner than that, given probably 60-day build, get a little better price in that, and I think that'll be fine. So we'll probably get that completed by 1st of June on the cemetery. I don't know if I'd mentioned to you with regards to power, that I'd spent some time back with you with regards to small modular reactors and you have this position with looking at those. We were working with a company out of Corvallis with the Oregon State, University of Oregon State, and New Scale, they have received the Department of Energy grant, so they were successful. Had they not received the Department of Energy grant, which is $226 million, we would have not, that project would have basically been dead as far as New Scale was concerned. So this was very crucial. There were several companies vying for this grant. Department of Energy seems to like their model the best and so they did award them the $226 million. Right now, we're looking at costs somewhere about $4,200 in installed kilowatt, which is actually pretty decent for nuclear. Again, this will be located, these nuclear, this nuclear facility will be located near the Idaho National Laboratory, it's about a 40-acre footprint, has the water already there. Again, we're talking about 45-megawatt units with a total of 12 of those, so that's about 540 megawatts in one facility. And of course, the great part about these SMRs is they're very safe, they're very reliable, they're built in such a way as that in the event that there is a cooling issue or a meltdown issue, they just shut themselves down even without operator assistance.
And their base load resource.
Their base load, yeah. And really, this is the, this is really one of the only significant alternatives we really have out there to replacing the carbon-based fuels that we have. And they're gone, they're gone. I mean, coal is dead. And so, and natural gas, you know, we've got good natural gas pricing right now, but there's CO2 issues coming out of the Environmental Protection Agency that's gonna push that a little bit higher. And so that's gonna take a little bit of a hit. One of the reasons natural gas is so cost-effective right now, of course, is the fracking, you're seeing additional regulations come out and probably appropriately so, some additional regulations coming out with the fracking issues. So, you know, natural gas is, I think, gonna continue to be, I don't know if you've seen the reports, really, the United States has, is the, you know, the Middle East for natural gas, we probably have more of a natural gas reserve than any other location in the world. The other interesting issue that just came out is, is the United States this last year significantly cut their imports on crude oil to higher than we ever have, which is not only good for the economy, but it's good for own safety. So that was a good positive thing, too.
Because of domestic production?
Domestic production. And so, so anyway, so gas will continue to be a big one, but gas and nuclear, I mean, again, the renewable resources for us are not base load, they're not, they're challenging, they're still expensive, they're coming down in price, but they're still expensive. They will be a part of the portfolio. Of course, we have both Pleasant Valley and the Horse Butte Wind Projects, where we participate in those, but it'll be fun to watch. We're talking probably 2024 with regards to these, assuming everything goes well, 2024 before the nuclear reactors will probably be up and running. But it's good. Oh, let me share one other item with you, too, while we're on this, is, as you all know, we have, one of our resources is a market product with Morgan Stanley. You all remember, we have a market product energy purchase with Morgan Stanley. We have asked them if they would consider what we call an extend, blend and extend, if they would consider that or give us another price at the end of our current contract, this is 2017. We don't think it's too early to begin discussing that with them. So they actually did not come back with a blend and extend, they actually came back with a pricing on 2017 to 2022. And we liked the pricing. It's very good pricing for us.
So they're willing to price up that far?
Yeah, but not beyond five years. I mean, because I had asked the question, is what if we push it out to a seven or eight year and immediately, you see, what we refer to as a hockey stick effect, and they shoot that up and the pricing is very, very good right now. And so Kelly and I have talked about it, we'll be bringing that back when we have a little bit more information on that, but if they'll hold to their pricing, it just seems, it just seems, you know, very comfortable for us to recommend to the council that we add on to that because it will certainly help us with rate stability.
I'm surprised they're willing to quote 2017 to 23 years early. I mean, they're still two and a half years.
Yeah. And we'll find most of the brokers and commodity people will do that, but we always expect, you know, the pricing to reflect that, that uncertainty. But I think they're still looking at very good gas supplies, that's where most of this base load is coming from, very good gas supplies during those times, press part pricing during that time. And so we were very, very pleased with the pricing we got back and to me, it's somewhat of a no-brainer. It's not, it's not a capital ownership investment, we have many of those and those come with their own risk. It is a market purchase, which we really do like. It is block, so, you know, we have to deal with the shoulders and those type of things, but still, that pricing. The other project I'd mentioned to you continues to move forward is the Kern River Waste Heat Project, which we're a significant partner on. Well, I'd say significant, we've got less than a megawatt, but we're one of the significant ones out there. And that pricing's coming in about $63 a megawatt, too, so that's very good for us right now.
This is the gas line?
That's the gas line out of Vail, the compressor station. So when they re-compress the gas, they generate all this heat, that heat gets then pushed through turbines, generates the power, we've got the transmission lines right out there to pick it up. So that still is a pretty good project for us and so, but New Scale, great, great news for us. I think that it'll be fun for all of us to keep our eye on that small modular reactors because they're gonna be, oh, Rolls-Royce has now joined the partnership now that the grant has been given, there's been a whole lot of partners wanting to saddle up, Rolls-Royce is looking at developing the production process. So their whole goal is to say, we'll take the Henry, we'll create the Henry Ford project for you. We'll talk about how we can produce these in such a way as that the process is most cost-effective. So Rolls-Royce will be actually a significant partner on that.
Car maker?
Yeah, actually, Rolls-Royce has been in the generation business for a long time. Years ago, I don't know if you remember, when Hilldale put in a generator unit out there in Hilldale, that was a Rolls-Royce unit. So they've been in the, in the generator business for quite a while. Anyway, I think, Mayor, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, Mayor and I and Chief Keith went out to the Homeowners Association last week at Coral Canyon. It's a very big homeowners. There's, I don't know how many were there, about 100? And they're just a good little group out there. We don't feel as threatened as we used to. We feel that we have some friends out there, they're good, good supporters, great citizens of our community, a great part of our community. And they just have some interest, not just about Coral Canyon, but they have interest all the way down Telegraph and all over the place and they're just, they're very, very helpful, wouldn't you say, Mayor? It was good meeting.
Very good meeting. Okay, let's make, somebody make a motion to adjourn. Okay, everybody in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all, appreciate you coming. Have a great evening.